But you wouldn't know it. Yeah, that's what I heard.
That's seventy years.
That is a... They look down now.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I know them. They grew up on the bottom of the county. You think it too? Yes. Yes, you think.
They go fishing.
A handful of them still down there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
They'll call me like a week later. Costa Rica, everybody took the boat down. Go fishing.
We're live.
I've just got to watch.
Yeah. I haven't been fishing down there yet.
Mike, ready?
He took us, uh...
That's okay, I started it.
I want to find this.
Got my first two varieties of tomatoes.
Okay, where? Where's the...
It's on.
Where's the...
I've got a couple varieties of beans on my list.
We're in the meters.
Couple of varieties of corn, I've got probably... I was planting my first, uh...
Oh, advanced metering.
Fifteen tomato plants in an audience. A few more weeks, I'll go ahead and plant my, uh, Roma's and I've got some, uh...
I know.
Couple other Roma varieties. I'm mixing probably only ten of those.
I get that, that's why I'm doing the...
I...
She been working on her thing.
You know, I've got an echo of the breeze sometimes, it's, uh... I got, I got more ambition than I got...
Thanks, we need to update that because the amount of trees.
We got an attachment.
Management, I guess.
One, and then add on.
Two, and then...
Yeah, two, and then I guess you could do this as three.
I took, I took one. Absolutely, the reason I fell in love is I started taking botany in high school. I started working botany, um, after biology two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two, there's, uh, one, botany two, but I'm taking botany two, that's really what got me into it. Um, it's what, it's what cultivated my growth. Not that I...
Okay.
Not that I got a career.
I haven't been a career since I was young. My wife does.
I can drop you if you want to. It's a wonder.
Yeah, my daughter.
So let's meet Douglas, man.
Alyssa said you have a farm.
Well, just, just, just so that I can remind people that you were that person last year. That's all. One, and I think we're...
A lot of the soft berries, raspberries, blueberries, blackberries.
We're ready, right?
It's been...
Lot going on today.
We don't hear, uh, we work with some of the big brands.
You ready?
Although I'm getting, I'm getting some, uh, canes from a friend of mine who is retired.
Signed up for social district.
Some New York sports cars. They put out.
No. They all take a right to it.
They're all together.
Goodness gracious.
Yo, yo, we ready down there?
Uh, yes.
Nice to see you, Ron. Nice to see you, Daddy. Everybody ready?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to, to order tonight's City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, and it is 7:02 PM. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. I would like to read our vision, which is that the City of Oxford will partner with the community to build upon the charming character of our historic, vibrant, and walkable city to create an extraordinary quality of life for all. And with that, for those who are so inclined, I would like to invite, uh, forward to the podium to open our meeting in prayer Pastor Jenny Wilson of Oxford United Methodist Church. And if you have electronic devices, please silence them or turn them off now.
Let us pray. I treasure your word in my heart, oh God. I run in the way of your commandments, for you enlarge my understanding. With these words from Psalm 119, oh Lord, we pray for tonight's work. Enlarge our understandings so to make good decisions about enhancements in our community, about future improvements and funding for those improvements. We are thankful, oh God, for faithful work already done, work that shows commitment and care. Enlarge our understandings, oh God, so we continue to support and thank all who work in government, law enforcement, all who are first responders, all in industries of service and care, all who make our life together safer and better. Enlarge our understandings, loving God, so we see how the good in our community can be even better when we care for others and commit to work side by side for the good of all. For indeed, dear God, we treasure your word in our hearts and we, we run in the way of your commands. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Pastor Jenny. And now Commissioner John Toby will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand, please, place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we will consider adjustments to an approval of the agenda. So in addition to the agenda that you have before you, we have three potential add-ons. Item one, from our city engineer, is, uh, a request. It consists of a cover and this attachment sheet for our revised capital improvement plan. And this is in order that we may add back in the advanced metering system because there was a grant opportunity to apply for them and it had been previously removed because we were not ready to, uh, apply for a loan for that. So that is item one. Item two is, uh, information, again, from our city engineer about an opportunity to, uh, apply for rural transformation grant funds for downtown revitalization. And in order to do so, um, we have before us a resolution that we could adopt in support of that. And item three, uh, I passed out to you, which is a copy of a resolution that we adopted last year at this time, um, to support the renovation and expansion of the Car Lake Regional Water System Plant. And we are preparing, um, another submission to Congressman Price's office for additional appropriation funds. And since the shortfall has increased, I, I would like, when we get to that, to read a small change to this that would update those numbers to reflect, um, the current status. So we have those three items, uh, before you. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
And that was a motion by Commissioner Con.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, any discussion on the motion? There being no discussion, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as stands with these three additions. All in favor, signal show by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The agenda stands adopted. Thank you very much. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our board has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. If you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time. Let the record note, there are no conflicts reported. At this time, we will go to our public comment portion of the agenda, where citizens and stakeholders may speak on the agenda as well as non-agenda items. And we first call forward Larry Thomas of 207 East Front Street in Oxford. Please come forth, restate your name and address and the purpose for your comments. Thank you.
Larry Thomas, 207 East Front Street in Oxford. And I'm here to speak on Agenda Items 5A, B, and C. I'll start with, uh, 5D. About a year ago or so, the City of Oxford paid DOT, uh, about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars to resurface 3.5 miles of street in Oxford. The bids came $250,000 under the estimate. So apparently DOT is going to refund you 250. But somehow there came a recommendation to not only not take the refund, but to spend an additional 175,000, uh, to do some stuff downtown and to enhance the College Street project. So, the bad part is that, from what I understand from the Public Works Committee meeting, that no additional resurfacing will be done until this loan is paid back. So you've added another couple of days at least to the, to the payback time if you accept this as submitted. The other thing that upsets me is the $75,000 for streetlights on College Street. It was stated in the Public Works Committee meeting, if these are just purely decorative, they're not going to provide much light in the area, they'll just glow at night. And at the same time, the staff is talking about adding some streetlights down around McDonald's and Wendy's and sidewalks that have recently been put in. And I think the money would be much better spent there. Also, if you read the text of the Agenda Item, if you put in the streetlights, you gotta deal with Duke, you gotta deal with two contractors, you gotta deal with DOTs. So it may turn out that the, uh, College Street resurfacing slash addition of median may take longer than the roundabout did. Agenda Add-on 5A, y'all are gonna vote on something and I hope you've been informed as to how much these proposed improvements are gonna cost and what the impact of these improvements are gonna be on your debt service. You know, I, I hope you've been informed, none of the public stuff has talked about how much these five projects cost. And I think somebody even mentioned in the Public Works Committee, how much do they cost? So hopefully you've been told. Agenda Item 5C, uh, you're gonna approve something for $2,831,945.50. And my question is, why is this such a precise amount? Have you already purchased something? Have you already negotiated something? It just seems like a... I mean, why didn't you say 3 million or 2 eight or whatever? And my final comment is, is my understanding that the local industry is interested in assisting the county and the city with developing mountain bike trails at Triangle North and around Lake Devon. I'm told that they're having difficulty in getting on, getting on the county agenda. But I think it would be an excellent opportunity for the city staff to spend some time and see what the industry has to offer. I think a mountain bike trail would be a wonderful addition to the city's recreational menu. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas.
I see you're gonna pass some more money tonight.
And we, I will answer the comment right now about the ARPA money. The, we are not actually buying anything at this time. And the sum is actually the precise amount that was allocated through those funds. And there is a standard deduction that we are allowed to take, much like one dozen taxes, but there's a standard of up to 10 million that you can allocate it to government services. And it, when we get to the point of deciding how to spend it, it will make the reporting process streamlined. So that's the only reason it, it is purely, um...
Yeah, well, kind of the way it read, you know, it said you could, you're automatically guaranteed 10 million and then you, then you come out with 2 eight. But what you say, it's, it's not your choosing, it's 2 eight and 50 cents.
That is the allocation that we have. And all jurisdictions are allowed the opportunity to move up to 10 million of their funds. So the county has a little more than that, so they're considering taking the 10 million standard deduction and then, and then, like, we intend to do, taking our time to decide how to use it.
Of course, you're gonna make a decision on some pretty expensive stuff that you just adopted. Now I won't say anymore, but they can.
Thank you. With that, I will invite Pierre Chang to come forward to the podium. And once there, please state your name and your address and your purpose for speaking for the record.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Pierre Chang, 3220 Bliss Trail in Stem, North Carolina, just a little town down the road from Oxford. Since Mr. Thomas hit the first half of the agenda, I'll just hit one item towards the middle. It's on page four, Item D, the social district for downtown Oxford. So I'll speak with my, uh, President of Economic Development Corporation hat on for a minute. Our committee has recommended a sort of broad solution to an opportunity that the state of North Carolina has presented to all towns as it relates to giving jurisdictions the opportunity to connect their businesses, not just alcohol vending businesses, but all of their businesses downtown by way of what they've considered a social district. So we think Oxford has a really, um, wonderful opportunity to implement this. We presented an area that we think addresses the current retailers as well as, uh, some spurs off from the main downtown area, where folks will be able to not only, um, purchase alcohol legally, but then carry it from site to site, uh, what we believe will enhance primarily the businesses who are non-alcohol vending. Uh, these would be shops that typically don't stay open past, you know, five or six o'clock at night. Give them an opportunity to increase foot traffic in front of their stores, give them an opportunity to participate if they want to. We give you that recommendation sort of in its broadest scope in terms of days of the week, hours of the day. Commissioner Cohen, I think, can speak more directly to some of those details. But the recommendation from the business community is to implement this in some fashion. And we'll leave it to the police chief, Public Works Director, the board, to figure out exactly where that fits best, since our perspective is sort of just around business and there's obviously other entities involved in this decision, like churches and communities and other businesses. What's nice about the way this was passed by the General Assembly was it gave us a framework, sort of a, uh, cut and paste and then fill in the blanks. So you could identify which streets, which days, which time of days. Really give you the flexibility to, uh, really tailor this to the way your downtown is built. We may see two or three city blocks that are perfect for Oxford today, where another town, you know, Franklinton or Raleigh or Durham, might see a huge area that is a better fit for them than, than here. So, uh, two things I'd leave you with. One is, uh, please take the recommendation from the DOE DC as sort of a broad guideline to what we would like to see you, uh, talk about. And also know that we think this is a living, breathing area. So as more retailers move in, as we use this as a tool to recruit new businesses that may or may not fit within the initial footprint, we think it sends the right message to new businesses to come to Oxford or open for business. Uh, but also something we can revisit in three months, six months, a year from now and say, does this still fit? Do the hours of the day work well? Is the police department struggling in certain sections of the day because of this? Uh, we do think that there's an opportunity to come back and see this again. So I appreciate your consideration and, um, stick around if anybody has any questions for me, I'll be willing to answer. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mr. Sheng. I would now invite Phil Dixon to come forward. Uh, and also, when you're at the podium, please state your name and address and purpose for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Phil Dixon, I live on 220 Saltry Road. And just out of interest, I'm now just, my wife and I have just been here five years, so we're still newcomers. I want to pick up on something that Jenny Wilson said earlier on, which is to assist you in making good decisions. And so one of the things I do, as many of you know, is research. And of all the places I've researched, have implemented a social districting, I cannot find anyone that had a bad experience. So it looks like it's positive for everybody. So I'm here just to support the fact that you guys are gonna hopefully order a public hearing and, um, offer my support in making such a district actually happen. Thank you. Quickly.
Indeed. Concise, thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. And now I invite Susan Cruz to come forward to the podium. Once there, please state your name, address, and purpose, again, for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Susan Cruz, my address is 6129 Huntsville Road. And I am here, I'm also a member of the DOE DC Board, but I am a non-alcoholic retailer in downtown. And I am here just to say that in the communities I have visited that had social districts, it was extremely nice and very well managed, and I never ran into any problem. And I feel like in downtown Oxford, if we were able to have the social district, that people could walk in front of our stores that where we serve, do not serve alcohol, and it could increase the number of traffic flow or the amount of traffic flow that we have in downtown Oxford. And the beautiful thing that I like about this plan is you can choose, storefront owners can choose to participate or not participate, and it'll be very easily marked. And I really can't foresee any trouble with that. So I'm super excited about this opportunity coming to Oxford. And I ask that you do move forward with the public hearing. And I like Phil's idea, quickly. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. We appreciate each of you taking the time to come up to City Hall to voice your comments and concerns. And, uh, that is the end of our list of folks signed up for today, uh, for public comments. So with that, we will move forward with, uh, I will make one comment, and that is as the public hearing is scheduled for next month's meeting, you may want to consider coming back at that time, depending on who else is here, so that, that you may want to restate your positions. And with that, I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Greg Grayson to come forward to present on the countywide fire district, uh, project that he has worked on.
Good evening, Miss Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you so much for the opportunity, uh, to be with you here this evening. And, uh, thank you for your service to the people of Oxford. I certainly appreciate your public service. And thank you for allowing me to be here to give you a brief update on the, uh, work that Granville County is conducting with the Fire Protection Service District. So I want to give a, a bit of an update on the progress that's being made. We've been working with Granville County for recent months in looking at a sustainable way to help fund fire protection for fire and rescue services in the unincorporated areas of, of Granville County. You may know that Granville County is one of the few remaining counties in North Carolina that does not have a funding system for the unincorporated areas in fire and rescue services. About 97, 98 of the counties in North Carolina have a system of funding, uh, fire and rescue services. Granville County does not. So we've been looking, uh, working with the county and looking at the different models that exist in North Carolina and what the legislature allows and different systems and looking at your structure and population and what might be a sus- best sustainable system for Granville County to help. Unfortunately, in our world today, we have a, a very much an expanding cost of providing fire and rescue services. Obviously, the cost of capital equipment in providing services is increasing and continues to increase. But as we look forward, the greatest increase will be in personnel. Uh, the number of volunteers is diminishing dramatically, not just in North Carolina, but across the United States. In North Carolina, we're losing about 10% of volunteers per year. And so when you look at the number of volunteers diminishing per year, uh, the need to be able to sustain the necessary volunteers or firefighters to, um, to, uh, provide services will be a significant cost in our future throughout North Carolina, not just Granville County. You're very blessed in Granville County to continue to have many volunteers and many great firefighters. But we're trying to look ahead into the future and have a sustainable funding system. As looking in Granville County, one of the, the best models in North Carolina that our legislature has provided, uh, to use and many counties are using is a service district system. And so we have been working with Granville County to provide it for the unincorporated areas. The county commissioners have looked at that. Uh, there has been a, a report and structure of how that might look for Granville County for the unincorporated areas. The commissioners have received that report and reviewed that. Uh, the commissioners have called for a public hearing to consider a, um, service district for the unincorporated area. Uh, they have held a public hearing. Uh, in calling for that public hearing, they've given proper notice in doing so. Uh, they have held that public hearing and they have, um, voted for a resolution to adopt a service district for the unincorporated areas of Granville County. That service district would not be effective, obviously, until July 1st of this year. As it's adopted for the unincorporated areas of Granville County, uh, it would be set up for a structure where there would be a fire commission that would be advisory to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners would have the authority, uh, and all, all authority always relies with the Board of Commissioners, but there would be an advisory group that would have representation in Granville County from the three jurisdictions or three geographical areas, the north, central, and southern areas. And it would have representation from fire service as well as residents in each of those areas. That group would have, uh, opportunity to give input on such things as contracts, agreements, jurisdictions, response areas, those types of, of, um, of inputs to the Board of Commissioners. So it, this particular model would enable a level of, um, sustainability in funding. As it starts out, there would, the desire is to provide a, um, sustainable level to continue the, the current funding that has been going to, uh, the fire departments in the past, as well as a level of enhancement to begin improving services and also a way to, um, begin replacing capital equipment that has become very aged and start replacing and having a capital improvement, improvement plan, just like you have within your municipality. And also be able to enable those departments to apply for grants. Many of the departments can't apply for grants because they don't have a match. They can't make a match. So enable, uh, grant match. And so, uh, as we look at those tools that are available in North Carolina, uh, the service district system, uh, is the, the direction that Granville County is heading into for the unincorporated areas, and that's moving forward. And we wanted to give you a brief update on where, uh, that is here for Granville County. And I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have. I want to give a, a appreciation to, uh, your fire service here in Granville County, uh, throughout the county, but particularly for Oxford because your department is seen certainly as a leader. It has been, it is today, and will continue to be a leader in the fire service here in Granville County. So, uh, thank you to your chief and thank you to your department. Uh, they have been nothing but professional to work with and, uh, nothing but a pleasure to work with for our group. And, uh, certainly want to give my appreciation to your chief and to your department thus far in this process. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grayson. Colleagues, is there anything that you would like to ask?
Just, uh, one question, that doesn't affect us at the moment, but I, I do understand, I was at the original meeting, um, that it could raise taxes slightly. Is that right?
Yeah, the, uh, the county commissioners have not set a tax rate for the, um, service district. That's gonna be part of the budget. So they have not set a tax rate. We have provided some models for what that could look like, uh, but they have not set that. That will be part of their budget setting process. Um, so, you know, it is, uh, necessary in order to, to cover the amount that they have been paying, plus be able to provide some level of enhancement and some level of capital, capital growth. But obviously, it's beginning, so it'll be very small.
Okay, thanks.
Let me, can I add to that?
Absolutely, please.
How about enhancing the conversation by explaining to this board the option that the city has to opt out, should we choose to do that? And please confirm for me if my understanding is correct, that if the city chooses to opt out, then the properties that reside within the city limits of the City of Oxford also essentially opt out of paying that fire service district tax?
Well, it's, it's really more of an opt-in, okay? So the, the service district is only for the unincorporated area. So the service district is only for the unincorporated areas. There is a provision in the general statute that allows the service district to expand to include municipalities that request to become part of the service district. And the service district can be expanded. It can be done prior to the implementation of the service district, or it can be done at a later time. It doesn't have to be before the service district begins. The statute allows that to be done at different times. So it's done by resolution. So municipality can say, we choose to become part of the service district. And if it chooses to become part of the service district, then that can go to the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners can choose if they want to accept that municipality within the service district. You obviously have to look at what that does to the service district. Does it jeopardize the balance within the service district? Can that rate, the rate within the service district support the municipality and in an unincorporated area? You know, does it create inequity or imbalance within that? So the commissioners ultimately make the decision. But a municipality can make a, take a resolution and request to be a part of the service district. Typically, what we see in North Carolina is very small municipalities make a request to be part of a service district. That's typically what we see. And small municipalities may choose to make a request, and Boards of Commissioners may accept that. But again, it's not a guarantee. The Board doesn't have to accept that. But it is done through resolution. And there's a process that the statute lays out in which you have to follow in order to do that.
Thank you.
Why would a municipality not want to be a part of this initiative?
If a municipality had, there are municipalities that have no fire department. They have no staff. They have no ownership of any equipment. They have no personnel. They contract with a private nonprofit corporation, and they have no assets whatsoever. And they may say, well, you know, we're really a small municipality, and we're contracting with a private nonprofit corporation anyway. Maybe most of that district is already in the unincorporated area. And the town may be smaller. Say the private nonprofit VFD, most of what they serve is in the unincorporated area anyway, and they also serve the municipality. Those are types of models that may, in many cases, prove to be advantageous to do that. Municipalities that have invested capital funds for many years, municipalities that have staff, that have invested, you know, into capital, you've invested into your community, it's part of your infrastructure. Typically, those do not see a value in doing that, and typically, there's not a lot of balance and equity in them. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, just for clarification. I understand it's the city's choice to opt in or opt out. But if we do not opt in, for clarification, are we then not involved with the tax?
Yeah, the service district only applies to the unincorporated areas of Granville County. It does not affect the municipality, municipal limits whatsoever. It's only for the unincorporated areas.
Excellent. Other questions from colleagues?
Yes, ma'am. Just for clarification and opting in and opting out, put that language aside. If as citizens of the city of Oxford, and we're already paying our city taxes, and we're also paying county taxes, how will this impact us? How will this impact us as far as whatever funding the fire district may need? If we were to be, whether it's in or out, but let's just say we want to be part of it?
Well, the service district is designed to be self-funded, if you will. In other words, it's sustainable. It's designed to be really dedicated funding. So all the funding, by law, all the funding that's collected in the unincorporated area in the service district can only be used for fire protection services in the unincorporated area in the service district. So the statute is very clear about that. Funding for fire and rescue services is the only purpose that that funding can be used for. So in a service district, you can only use the funds that are collected for the purpose in which it is collected for. So it's designed to be sustained.
So if I live here in Oxford, will I be taxed again for this fire district?
The service district is only taxed for the unincorporated area.
So, okay, that answers my question then, so then we won't even be part of it?
No, it's only for the, the service district would only apply to the unincorporated areas.
Unless the city of Oxford made a request to opt in, and at this point...
And it was accepted.
Correct. Thank you very much. At this point, with the discussions that the fire chief and the manager have had, with the amount of investment that we have in our own system, and remember that one of the things that Mr. Grayson pointed out is everybody who's in the service district then becomes subject to the jurisdiction of the fire commission. So when you have a fully formed department, as we do, there is less interest, in addition to having to pay a tax, to ceding control over our fire department to a commission that comes from the entire county. So at this point, and further, I would like to say, am I correct in thinking it's eighty-two thousand five hundred, Mr. Grayson, that is the baseline amount that the county has historically allocated to all of its fire departments, including the city of Oxford and Butler Public Safety, which are the two formal, formally established fire departments, separate from volunteer, that funding that county intends to maintain? So at this point, we will not see a loss of funds. And then that tax will be used for those who are participants in the fire district and applied to supplement beyond that baseline funding. And if I misspoke, Mr. Grayson or chief, that captures it?
You're exactly correct. The amount that you have been receiving is positioned in our templates for recommendation for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget and to be funded by that service district. So that amount you have been receiving is positioned for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. It's important, when you think about fire services, that Oxford has been an important part of the fire service delivery system in Granville County. It is an important part and will continue to be. Fire services are very important. I served as chief in Greensboro before retiring. All the agencies around us were very important. Greensboro's a large department. It has almost six hundred fifty firefighters. But we needed help from our neighbors. They needed help from us. You know, no matter how large you are, you need help from your neighboring agencies. So you need help from your neighbors. They need help from you. So when you think about the service delivery system, you're part of that system. And I think that's our position with that, that as well. You're part of the system. So that's part of the rationale in that funding structure as well, is when one agency has an incident, you help them, they help you. And so that's part of that balance that's needed in that service delivery system.
Mayor Procham, I just realized that, did I hear you say your question was answered? Did you have a further question?
Teresa, you and Teresa asked my question, but Ron had it saying that.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. Just touched on it. I was going to ask if the existing agreements we've had for departments helping each other would be maintained.
Automatic aid and mutilate are just critical to the success of any fire department in today's world, sir.
Commissioner, did you have a further question? Lumpkin? Yep? Okay. Yes, sir. Commissioner Bridges?
I'm just trying to get this clear in my head. If we opt out, you know, what effect would that have on our volunteer firefighters? I mean, you know, I heard something about, you know, we got to move to a system where, you know, we start having funds for volunteer...
At this point, you would continue to have funding from the service district because you're continuing to be a part of the system. The only difference would be that, you know, you would not, your residents would not be part of the service district because only the people in the unincorporated area would be part of the service district. Only those people in the unincorporated area would be paying a service district tax because they're helping to fund all of those private nonprofit corporations and departments. Maybe that's helpful. It really would not necessarily affect any of the volunteers that you have. That's a decision for the city of Oxford to make. A decision for you to determine with funding, and your chief to manage. This would have no effect upon your volunteers that you manage and that you're responsible for. You can operate your department in any manner that you choose to operate.
Excellent. Further questions, colleagues? Okay, Mr. Grayson, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you again for your service to the people of Oxford.
We appreciate your coming tonight. So with that, we move forward to acknowledge our Morgan Ren Employee of the Month and how fitting it is that it is representative of our own Oxford Fire Department. We already recognize Chief Kotrell, I think that was two months ago. And now we have Matt Dickerson, who chose not to be present tonight, but he goes formerly by the name Douglas M. Dickerson. He is our captain of the Oxford Fire Department. And he is being celebrated with the Morgan Adams Ren Employee of the Month Award for his love of helping those in his community and carrying on a family tradition of service. And it is presented this, the 12th day of April, 2022, by the City of Oxford Mayor and Board of Commissioners. And I would also like to mention that we failed to acknowledge last month's recipient of the Morgan Adams Ren Employee of the Month Award, who is our very own Cynthia Matthews Bowen, City of Oxford Clerk to the Board, for her dedicated work ethic and willingness to pivot without notice to accommodate any and all requests. And I think we need to give both of them a round of applause. So this is a wonderful thing, I think, that we celebrate an employee every month, and we cherish all of our city employees. They do a great job. They work hard. And they often hear more complaints than anything else. So it's a nice opportunity to recognize that we appreciate you. So thank you so much for the work that you do. And with that, I will move forward and invite Hock Eng to the podium for a financial discussion.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners? Good evening again. So I'm here, my name's Hock Eng, to report on the financials and for the month of March, ending March. The target for the month of March is seventy-five percent. So if you're looking at the financials, the year-to-date total, if it's exceeding seventy-five or less or more, that's what we're looking at. Looking at the total for the current tax levy, the property tax, we, right now, we're at a hundred percent. That doesn't mean that we're not going to get any more, or should we get less. It's going to just continue to go up because our budget, we budget big conservatively. And because of that, majority of our revenue, when it exceeds, it's just very much a sense of being frugal and anticipating that COVID had done some pretty much damage to the economy. The budget officer just clammed down and did a hold-the-line budget. And as you remember, this is really paying off. So if you look at the total, we're at ninety-one point nine percent. And remember, the target is seventy-five. What I did was I went back to last March and pulled out those numbers and compared the total. And the total right now is eight million, eight hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Compare that to last March total. We are ahead five hundred forty thousand. And that's for the revenue. So going down to the expenditure, the total for expenditure is at six million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars. And so not everybody has spent their money. Right now, there's still April, May, and June to go. But where we stand at the end of March, we are ahead two million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars. And as you can see, each of the departments, where they are as far as expenditures go. This expenditure is very, very important to all the department heads, myself and the budget officer. We keep an eye on this much more than we do with the revenue. The revenue, year after year, continue to grow. But the expenditure, we try to budget and hold accountability for the expenditure. And if we can spend only what we budget, at the very end of the year, we're going to have a surplus. And we've been doing this for the last five, six years. And because of that, the financials for the city of Oxford is very, very strong. When you compare that to a lot of other units, the ARPA money come in, a lot of people are using it for replacement, revenue replacement, where we couldn't make all formally work. And so there's no need for us to really try to squeeze that in and say, okay, we lost revenue. We have it. So that's a good thing. Well done, Commissioners, for your budget. This is your budget, and we are on target. At the end of March, all the cash and investments in the bank is at twenty-three million, seven hundred sixteen, seven twelve. And when you break that down, the general fund is eight point five million, and power fund is three hundred and thirty thousand. That service, that's coming up. That service, we paid that service in November, October, November, every year, for the interest. And then May, close to May, the interest plus principal. So that will reduce down significantly after the latest report. The water fund has been really, it's doing really well. It's a little bit over ten million. Stormwater management is over a million. And then, of course, the American Rescue Fund, that is still in there, hasn't been touched, one point four million dollars. Do you have any questions so far? Let's move on to the Water and Sewer Fund. At the end of March, we have eighty-eight point two percent for revenue as compared to the expenditure at sixty-four point seven. And again, we still have April, May, and June to go. And where we stand right now is one point five million dollars over the revenue over expenditure. When I took those numbers and compared the last year's for the revenue, the water charges has increased, the sewer charge has increased, and the total increased so far at the end of March, it's over four hundred thousand... of March, it's over $400,000.
Thank you, Mr. Eng. Colleagues, any questions? Did you, did I cut, I didn't, did I cut you off?
No.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Eng? Excellent. Thank you very much for taking the time to review this with us, we appreciate it. And if, Ms. Bowen, did we leave any of these up on the table?
Yes.
So if anybody is interested, the sheet that he reviewed with us is a nice, small print, one pager up on the table, and you're more than welcome to pick one up, and if there aren't enough, please feel free to check with our clerk, and we'll make sure you get one.
It's also posted online as well.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Okay, and with that, we move forward. Tonight, we do have no items under public hearings, so we move forward to city business, which Larry Thomas spoke about earlier, and we have five resolutions requesting state loans or grants for clean water, which is the wastewater collection system, and drinking water, the water distribution system. And so we are going to take a motion and vote on each one of the five resolutions individually, and you have, these resolutions under 5A, and what I would like to do is, I will read the first one, I know that's copious, but since there are five and we have some public present, I think it's good for folks to hear what the resolution says, and then with each differing one, there's only one sentence that changes from one to the next, and we'll go through that way. And so, "Resolution by governing body of the City of Oxford, whereas the Federal Clean Water Act Amendments of 1987 and the North Carolina Water Infrastructure Act of 2005 have authorized the making of loans and grants to aid eligible units of government in financing the cost of construction and studies of wastewater collection systems. And whereas the City of Oxford has need for and intends to construct or conduct a study on a drinking water distribution system project described as Phase IV Sewer System Improvements shovel-ready projects. And whereas the City of Oxford intends to request state loan and/or grant assistance for the project, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Oxford that the City of Oxford, the applicant, will arrange financing for all remaining costs of the project if approved for a state load or grant award. That the applicant will adopt and place into effect on or before completion of the project a schedule of fees and charges and other available funds, which will provide adequate funds for proper operation, maintenance, and administration of the system and the repayment of all principal and interest on the debt. That the governing body of the applicant agrees to include in the loan agreement a provision authorizing the state treasurer, upon failure of the City of Oxford to make scheduled repayment of the loan, to withhold from the City of Oxford any state funds that would otherwise be distributed to the local government unit in an amount sufficient to pay all sums then due and payable to the state as a repayment of the loan. That the applicant will provide for efficient operation and maintenance of the project upon completion of construction thereof. That I, the mayor, the official authorized and successor so titled, is hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the applicant with the State of North Carolina for a loan and/or grant to aid in the study of or construction of the project described above. That the authorized official and successor so titled is hereby authorized and directed to furnish such information as the appropriate state agency may request in connection with such application or the project, to make the assurances as contained above, and to execute such other documents as may be required in connection with the application. That the applicant has substantially complied or will substantially comply with all federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations and ordinance applicable to the project and to federal and state grants and loans pertaining thereto, adopted this the 12th day of April, if you so choose, 2022 at Oxford, North Carolina." So that is the resolution for Phase IV Sewer System Improvements, that are shovel-ready projects, because I take it design work, whereas our engineer has already been done. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bridges, is there any discussion? So I do have a question related to Mr. Thomas's comment. Am I correct in understanding that the reason that we are doing these now is because there is a very tight deadline and an ideal opportunity to procure funding for these projects, and since we are meeting now, and the deadline is coming before the May meeting, that is why we are adopting the resolutions with this wording, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Once we have the final applications, will you come back to the board with more detail regarding the specifics of the projects and the funding amounts?
We will do that. We can also hold a Public Works Committee meeting if we would like, you know, before the applications are actually submitted, to identify the amount of each individual project, but since we have the resolution to apply before the May board meeting, we want to give you for you in order to have the opportunity to get the funding.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from other board members? Okay, all those in favor of Commissioner Bridges' resolution to adopt this motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The resolution carries. Then item two, which goes to the next page, which is the Phase IV Water System Improvements, Shovel-Ready Projects, and the body of it is exactly the same as what I already read. The second paragraph reads, "Whereas the City of Oxford has need for and intends to construct or conduct a study on a drinking water distribution system project described as Phase IV Water System Improvements, Shovel-Ready Projects. And whereas the City of Oxford intends to request state loan and/or grant assistance for the project." That is, and everything else is the same. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock, any discussion? All in favor, the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. We move to item three, which is Sewer System Phase V Improvements, and the language in the second paragraph is, "Whereas the City of Oxford has need for and intends to construct or conduct a study on a drinking water distribution system project described as sewer system expansion and enhancement. And whereas the City of Oxford intends to request state loan and/or grant assistance for the project, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners," and so on and so forth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion and resolution carries. Item four is Water System Phase V Improvements, and so the second paragraph reads, "The City of Oxford, whereas the City of Oxford has need for and intends to construct or conduct a study on a drinking water distribution project described as water system expansion and enhancement. And whereas the City of Oxford intends to request state loan and/or grant assistance for the project," and so on and so forth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Any discussion? All in favor, the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously as well. We go to item five, which is the Water Meter Modernization, and the second paragraph reads, "Whereas the City of Oxford has need for and intends to construct or conduct a study on the drinking water distribution system project described as Water Meter Modernization. And whereas the City of Oxford intends to request state loan and/or grant assistance for the project," and so on and so forth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Oh, that was a concomitant motion between Commissioners Lumpkins and Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And I will add that we are also preparing a funding request to Congressman Price's office for this project as well. The water plant project takes priority, but we will use this resolution to submit to his office, which is due Thursday as well. And with that, we have taken care, oh, and I just realized that I failed to read the description, and I think I probably said it, but I'm going to read it anyway, that was in the agenda packet. "The City has the opportunity to receive low-interest loans or grants from the state in the spring 2022 round. This will allow us to complete shovel-ready projects that were bid as alternates and subsequently had to be removed from the projects when the projects were over budget. It will allow the City to look at installing new lines to put in the necessary backbones for future development." And lastly, we may be able to accomplish the changeover in the modern metering system, and I apologize for leaving that out earlier. We move forward to item B, which is to consider approving the resurfacing initiative on Williamsboro Street, Main Street, and College Street Lights. The City potentially has the opportunity to add additional work to the NC DOT resurfacing contract to add landscaped bulbous medians and upscale crosswalks on Williamsboro Street and Main Street. There's also the possibility of adding decorative lighting to the new median created on College Street with the utility project. The estimated cost is as indicated below, and you have support information in Attachment 5B, which includes concept plans for the bulbous and so on on Main and College Street at, or in Williamsboro Street, as well as a concept design for the lighting for the median on College Street. And so we have item one, the work on Williamsboro Street is expected to be $200,000. The work on Main Street is expected to be $150,000, and the College Street Lights are expected to be $75,000 with lights put every 100 feet and conduit by the city. These improvements are contingent on NC DOT approval and the willingness of at least two contractors to add the work to their existing projects that are underway and Duke Energy's assistance. If we do not move forward now, the City will lose this opportunity, that's because they will already be coming through on the resurfacing project, and you have that support information, and of course, Mr. Thomas's comments made during the public comment period. Recommended action is that the board provide staff with the directive to be forward with specified improvements and the amount to be funded. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges and Tovey, any discussion?
I have one question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
This question, yes, Amy, you probably answer it better than any of us. At the meeting, the committee meeting last week, we talked about getting in front of DOT, because right now, this is, you know, kind of pending their approval to adjust the project. Has there been any headway? Do you have any sense of which way they're leaning?
They have not been entirely receptive at the level that was reached out to by our consultant, but we are going to be calling their supervisor tomorrow and having that conversation because a promise was made by DOD that this should be allowed and with the contract, should we choose to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I just wondered, had we decided on what those lights in the median would look like? I've seen several different designs, and how is that going to be decided?
I believe we would be holding another Public Works Committee meeting to allow the board members to look at the various styles that are available. What we want to do right now, at this point, if you found it in the lights, we could probably not come for at least a year, eight months.
Right. But we, but we will have an opportunity to look at several different designs and decide on which one would look best.
That's correct. We will bring that to the committee and then forward to the board for a final decision.
Well, the key point of that, of course, is going to go back to Commissioner Cornet, let's get approval through DOT to allow us to do that. If that goes through, then we can, like, start looking at what options we have.
The College Street Lights have a higher likelihood of being allowed. It's the resurfacing contract on Main and Williamsboro that might be a little bit stickier, but I have been talking to another consultant about, is there more than one way to do this, and what's other options might be? I've yet to have an opportunity to comprise the city manager of some of those thoughts, but we are working really hard.
And in essence, is it, is it because that project, that resurfacing project has already been bid out, and so we're trying to do an adjustment to it after the fact?
Correct, but the DOT had indicated rather than do an amendment to the bid before the bid, they preferred us to come in and do a change order. Now, other staff at DOT is not in agreement with that process, but there, there is an opportunity to look at this a different way that may be beneficial to all parties.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
So if DOT isn't as receptive as we'd like relative to the lights, can we use the American Rescue Fund to do that project?
As I said, the lights are probably the most receptive, you know, the easiest to get in, it's the Main and Williamsboro Street, that's the stickier ones, but ARPA funds are something that was discussed to be utilized for doing any or all of this work that, you know, would use to move forward.
Okay. So even if it's for the resurfacing, we could, we could use that fund?
We could use our ARPA funding to add to the resurfacing contract or to the utility contractor to install the conduit, which is what Duke Energy needs to have in place to place the lights.
I'll add a little more clarification in the next item on the agenda about ARPA funding.
Okay, excellent.
Commissioner, you read that?
Well, I did.
Thank you.
And I'm trying to figure out what exactly my question really is. If the DOT is not in favor, or, or what will be our contingency plan if they say no?
DOT, the contingency they have ties back to the deadlines they have on this project, which also ties to other projects that Sunrock is moving forward to after this one. One of the things that, you know, we've got a couple options we're looking at, but I don't really want to speak to them too much until I explore them further.
Okay, but in essence, though, we will get our streets repaid, these that are listed. Whether or not we get lights, you know, you're saying that it's a high likelihood that we may, so what will we be giving up if they just say no?
College Street doesn't have anything to do with the resurfacing project. College Street has to do with a utility project. So the lights on College Street don't tie to DOT approving them as part of the resurfacing. DOT just has to approve the installation of the conduit in the right way, which should not be an issue. What is a bigger question with that is getting the utility contractor to agree to install the conduit as part of their project because it is not part of the bid.
So then, does that mean then we go back to leaving the street the width that it is and just?
The median will be installed.
Okay.
And we have two contractors that are working within that median, Metro and HG Reynolds. So we have the opportunity to work with both of those contractors to solicit a price and make sure it's within the amount that we feel is reasonable. If they come back and say, well, conduit in for $500,000, we don't feel that's reasonable. So we've got to work with those two contractors to ensure that they will give us a reasonable price to install the conduit and for the lights on College Street. and for the lights on College Street.
That answer?
The DOT has a greater level of acid reflux in regards to the bump outs, the paint scheme, the crosswalks, and doing all those kinds of things because they were not a part of that original SunRock contract. So I don't believe that, you know, the project that Amy is speaking about on College Street, we're going to have a lot of resistance. We have, we may have to twist arms a little bit to get them to agree, including our contractors. But our contractors like to get paid too, so you do hold the purse string to a certain extent. But it's the DOT and dealing with all of the schematics that you've got for bump outs and curb radius turns and changing parking angle and all those kinds of things that they're having a little bit more heartburn about.
But am I correct in remembering that when we had all of this discussion about these plans and the engineering designs and everything, that one big piece of the discussion, this was well over a year ago, was that we will submit the schematics for the bump outs and the changed angles so that they can be painted in if we didn't have the funds to actually build it out. So to answer Commissioner Gilry's question, would it be reasonable to say that if they say, no, we're not going to let you build it out, then the default is that they get painted in? And we do our best to make that look good?
We would have to back up and potentially create a separate project with an additional contractor, whoever we can arrange to do that. Basically, that's the default backup.
But didn't DOT approve those?
The DOT agreed to it, yes, ma'am. I remember that meeting quite vividly. It's been 18 months, if not two years ago. That John Sander was there and saw all of these plans and didn't seem to have a lot of hesitancy in saying, yes, that looks reasonable, DOT would consider, you know, doing that and yada yada, what else he said. But, you know, at the end of the day, you still have to get them to accept, approve, put their name on the dotted line and do those things. And unfortunately, Amy would tell you, I think a lot of the folks that were in DOT Division Five are not in DOT Division Five any longer. So you're dealing with some different people.
Right.
Mr. Sander is still there.
And so I just thought that, you know, all the discussion about the design was, if we don't submit these engineering designs to, at a bare minimum, paint the changes in, they will take a picture of what the street looks like.
They'll attempt to recreate exactly what you got.
So the expectation from my point was always, well, then they're going to paint it in according to the engineering design because we sent them.
I think we can actually get them to do that if they won't add the islands if we choose to do that.
Right.
However, John Sander is not the one that said no. It was the project manager that said no. We still have to go back to John Sander who outranks the project manager and have a conversation we can.
Okay.
It gets interesting, though we still have some options to move forward with. And we can certainly report back to you once we've had further conversations and have a better feel for it.
Okay.
But we just need to know, do we move forward with these conversations? Or do we just stop because we don't, you know, don't want to extend?
Right. Right. Thank you.
Can't we send them some privacy?
Any other questions? Okay, I've forgotten who made the motion.
It's on my other page.
Okay, Commissioner Bridges made that motion. If there is no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That motion carries unanimously. We appreciate your hard work on it. And I would say in response to Mr. Thomas's consternation that, you know, we adopted the downtown master plan probably, oh, 2016? I think 2016. And these changes were identified in that master plan with the exception of the lights down College Street. So they've been in the works and as you heard from the discussion, we've been discussing these bump outs as a way of getting close to the tenants of the master plan. And this is probably the most affordable way that we can come close to achieving some of those improvements. So thank you for that very interesting discussion. And with that, we move to item C. Consider the American Rescue Plan Act Grant Project Ordinance Amendment. Taking the standard allowance as authorized by 31 CFR Part 35.6 Paragraph D1. In the final ruling from the United States, Treasury Municipal Governments are allowed to elect a standard allowance of up to $10 million, not to exceed the award amount, to spend on government services through December 31st, 2026. Funds spent on government services are subject to streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. Staff recommends that the board elect to take this standard allowance for the entire award amount of $2,831,945.50. And you have support information in attachment 5C. It says staff report. And the recommended action is that staff recommends electing to take the standard allowance as authorized by 31 CFR Part 35.6 Paragraph D1 and expend all of our awards for the provision of government services. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tovey. Is there any discussion on the motion? I have a question, and that is, as I understand it, this election is irrevocable. And so my question is, is there any area of allowed spending of ARPA monies that would not be included in this category?
No. That's a short, quick answer. But I will provide a little clarification for that. First of all, I hope that all the information that you receive just about on a weekly basis from either myself or the League of Municipalities has got you thoroughly confused in regards to interim rules and final rules and all of those things.
Yes.
But quite frankly, should you elect the standard allowance, it simplifies things. And that's the point of it. And that's what the Treasury and government is really allowing us the opportunity to do. I will clarify that what you're doing is electing a standard allowance. You're not taking a standard deduction. We're not paying taxes.
I apologize for that.
I will say that, you know, if you were reading the interim rule, which was basically what we were all attempting to follow and going on webinars with the School of Government for practically a year until such time as the final rule came out, there was a lot of discussion about revenue replacement categories and what you can do, what you can't do, and all these types of things. Well, the final rule, which is effective now, really simplified things for especially governments that have received or are receiving 10 million or less. That is us. We're receiving 2.8 something million dollars in two tranches over the course of two fiscal years. We've received one. We won't receive the other one until '22, '23. And we've not expended anything at this point in time. So we are still, you know, having those conversations about what to best do with the funding. And I will clarify that the standard allowance basically allows a local government to expend up to their full allotment, up to a maximum of 10 million, of course, we wish, in revenue replacement category without having to demonstrate any actual lost revenue growth. That was the difference from the interim rule that Mr. Ung was referencing of going through this formulaic equation of trying to prove revenue loss so that you could claim revenue replacement. You no longer have to do that. A local government may spend ARP funds in this category, which is the revenue replacement category, for the provision of government services. This includes anything that a local government has state law authority to spend money on, including general fund and enterprise fund expenditures, capital and operating expenditures, and even administrative expenditures such as employee salaries and benefits. So it has dramatically broadened what you can do with that funding. So I hope that answers your question as to what you can and cannot do with it. You can do just about anything that you wish to do with it in the category of general governmental services. There will continue to be, you know, reporting requirements that we will have to file. The first one is April the 30th. And that's why we're here before you now requesting that you elect the standard allowance for the city of Oxford, which greatly minimizes the paperwork that has to be completed by staff and allows you the flexibility to make those determinations over the course of the next few years. You have until 2026, December 31st, to expend those funds. So you have some time. As you know, we've been having some conversations with the county about, you know, attempts to maximize our ability to get the Car Lake Regional Water System project financed and seeking their assistance through some of their funding. We perhaps may utilize a significant portion of ours for that purpose. The thought behind that, of course, is that any money that the city can find via grants to contribute to that project is money that the ratepayers don't have to pay back. So you're maintaining or keeping your rate manageable to the best of your ability. And in my opinion, I don't know of anything that you can do that reaches all of your citizens, such as that, to maintain those water rates and keep them at an affordable level to the best of our ability. Because any money that we provide to the total of that project are going to be factored into the rates that we pay for that bulk water. But we've got time to make those decisions and determine where that breakdown is of 2.8, 5.1, 4.1, whatever it is, and where you wish and choose to expend that. But you have a lot of options available to you.
Thank you very much for that explanation. So we would not, not that I know that we want to do this, but I do know that one of the issues that came up during the course of the pandemic was, of course, access from our least advantaged population to adequate broadband and internet service. And if there, and I apologize that I did not have time to look this up myself, but there's not a, if the city should be interested in doing something that in addition to our interest in supporting the water treatment plant project, we wanted to do something in the area of broadband enhancement, that is not prohibited by?
I don't believe that it is prohibited. My advice to you would be to very closely monitor what the county is doing. The counties in the state of North Carolina and across the nation are really the ones taking the lead in that and being challenged to do so. The county is submitting, if I recall correctly, two separate grant applications for funding that we should hopefully know something by the end of the year as far as whether or not they would be funded. One of those projects, the first one that we heard about during the county's, the first night of it, did include the Oxford area to establish broadband in this area. So, you know, if I would, my point is I don't want you to duplicate efforts and spend funds in something that is duplicative.
Okay.
And didn't the county receive 30 million?
No, 11.
11.
11.
Bramble County is a little over 11 million.
11 million, okay.
And it's based on a per capita form, basically. That was the determination of the actual amount for those that don't know that. It was based upon our population.
Where did I get that 30 million?
I will. I'm going back and get the rest.
I suspect that that may have come from the appropriation in the North Carolina state budget. And 35 million went to South Bramble Water and Sewer Authority for work with their wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Maybe that's where it came from. Yes, ma'am.
What exactly will be a shortfall if we get nothing from anyone else with the water treatment plant?
Well, I don't know that there'll be a shortfall. There currently is a funding gap. And we have a number of options that we're looking at to fill that gap, including this, including another item that's on the agenda for hopefully the board's support in consideration of the resolution to seek some additional funding through Congressman Price. This office, we, if you recall, last year, we received an appropriation of 3.5 million through the community, what do they call those?
Projects.
Projects or, yeah, community project congressional funding. We're seeking that. We're taking the initiative to seek additional funding. So, you know, we're looking at a number of ways to complete that gap, including doing that. And I'm always, the mayor will tell you this, and Commissioner Bullock will tell you this, at all the meetings that we've attended over the last five years, have been a huge proponent of seeking every funding that we can find available to us at the lowest possible cost to our citizens, if we can get grants, if we can get 0% interest loans, any of those things. If we can utilize some of our reserves that we have at Car Lake Regional Water System to complete this project and break ground and get moving forward, that is my preference. So I preface that with leading into this, that there is also a movement to basically establish or take out a commercial loan that would fill that gap as we pursue these funds from different sources that would allow us to basically move forward and give the design, build, build contractor the notice to proceed and move forward with the project so that we can start the project. Materials can be ordered. All of those things can take place, all of the logistics necessary before the price continues to climb any further. The environment that we're in is just continuing to escalate every day, it seems like. So the effort has been to try to move that project forward with finding the funding through any means that is available out there. And I say commercial loan because that is one that is being pursued. But it was with the caveat, as far as the commercial loan, that we have the ability to pay early or make prepayment to that commercial loan without penalty. If we find other sources of funding that's available to us via through a direct appropriation from Congress, a direct appropriation through the state of North Carolina, or any of these funding programs through state revolving funds or any of these applications that we're trying to make in these funding rounds where all of this funding is flowing down through state-level ARPA funds from the federal government to these programs. So we're trying to do everything that we possibly can to find that funding gap, initiate the project, move it forward, and utilize as much funding as we have either available to us or confined grant-wise. But in the meantime, you know, you've got to go to the local government commission to get approval to move forward. And one of the things that they require is, do you have full funding for this project lined up? And if you don't have that yet, they're not going to give you approval to move forward. So that's been a key component of the project itself in moving forward.
Okay. My answer to my question was, I thought my question was, how much of a gap do we have for the water treatment plant?
It depends on how much of the, well, goodness, it's a long convoluted story. Like we talked about it, I retrieved.
Just whatever the gap is, not all the contingencies for it, but what do we?
My point is that there are elements of the project that have been removed or set aside that are key to the project reaching its maximum potential of creating 20 million gallons per day. So that's where I'm going with this. There are a number of components of the project, and I can't name them because I don't have all the emails sitting in front of me now. But with all of those components added back into the project, of course, it's a lot more. Right now, you don't have a guaranteed max price because that guaranteed max price expired on December the 31st. It was 66 million something, correct, Amy?
Just short of 67.
Yep, 66.7 million. And I think we were talking about establishing a commercial loan in the range of 12 to 15 million. We have since met again. We have since met again about three weeks ago and had some conversation about that again and had another meeting via Zoom. And there has been some movement from Henderson to potentially tap more of their reserve funding. So the more that gets pitched in from the reserve that is available out there, the quicker that gap gets filled and gets filled with basically money that we already have or is not going to be borrowed and have to be repaid in loan form. So, you know, giving you a specific number, it's roughly, what, 15 million?
I'd say 20 million. Currently, we've got guaranteed funding of about 47 million, 46.783 something. So in our last GMP, guaranteed maximum price was around 66. So that's a 20 million gap dollar gap. If we add the four items that were removed and unless those of you are really interested, that's about another 20 million. So we have a shortfall of 20 million, give or take, to start the reduced project and a shortfall of 40 million if we want to do the complete project and take the plan to 20 NGV instead of 15 NGV.
But I would add to that a couple of things. As the manager mentioned, the difference between the 46 and the 66, we got 3.5 million from from prices appropriation in this past year's budget, and we are submitting a request for an additional 3.5 million. The Car Lake Partnership, Water System Partnership has, is, is thinking about allocating an additional 10 from fund balance towards this and has made the move, as Alan mentioned, for up to 15 million in private funding, which would put the partnership in a position to get the go-ahead from the local government commission to start, all the while trying to look for additional sources. So the gap is being met with the addition of that private loan, but the goal is to to ideally get rid of the pilot private loan if we can find additional funding. And, but there's a little bit of room now, and there's, of course, a lot more money available coming through the infrastructure money that the federal government passed as well, coming through the state. So there is the potential to get that money in grants and loans. But the other part of that gap is that it is proportioned by ownership. So the city of Oxford, if there's a 20 million gap, our 20% proportion of that is 4 million, Henderson's is 12 million, and Warren County's is 4 million. So that kind of hopefully brings it in a little closer to what does that mean for the city. And-
All right, and the reason that I want my finance director to talk to us about our finances and how well we're really, really doing, and I am amazed at how well we're doing. And, but just since we've had this meeting today, we've talked about actually using some of our ARPA funds to fund a project because maybe DOT is not going to approve whatever that that we envisioned that we wanted to to get done. And yet, and still, we have a shortfall of something that has a major, major price tag, that has a major, major price tag to to us as a city and each citizen in the city. And we're talking about, you know, using this, this, this blessing that we've gotten as far as this ARPA money to to fill in some of these other little holes over here of things that that we want to fulfill with the, what are you part of, Brian?
The D- the- DOE-DC.
Yeah, D- DEO, say it again, Brian.
Downtown, downtown Oxford Economic Development Corporation.
I mean, so we can't keep talking about spending that money when we have a major, big bill over our head and and a major need that that has a direct impact on everybody and everything that has to deal with the city of Oxford. And I, and I just want us to, we, we have this, this, this big pocket of money sitting over here, and we don't know what to do with it. And so every time that we have a little shortfall, we're going to take a little nip of it, and pretty soon, when we really need it, it's not going to be there because we nipped at it just a little bit too much, maybe. I don't know. I mean, I, I think we need to really sit down and think about how we really want to spend this big pocket of money over here, and it may just be to deal with our water treatment facility plant thing, and then we will deal with all the other extra monies and reserves that we have, you know, and nip at it, or whatever we want to do. But I, I am just overwhelmed with the very idea that we, we tend to lose sight sometimes of of what we really want to spend our money on.
Well, I will comment on that, that as staff, I don't think we've, we've lost sight at all of what we're, you know, encouraging you to do or recommending. The Car Lake Regional Water System Project continues to be a picture that continues to be painted, and it has not yet reached completion. I'll add on to something that'll further confuse you in that, you know, in seeking this funding, what you're seeking tonight via the resolution that the mayor passed out is city of Oxford. We exist in District Four of the Congress. Warren and Henderson exist in District One. So there's the opportunity there for them to seek funding through their congressman, who was Congressman Butterfield, to potentially provide them with some funding. So all of these things are still out there in moving pieces. We are also getting ready to submit another application to the state of North Carolina for funding, and through these programs that are there via grants and loans, they will ultimately determine if we get funding based upon a point criteria and based upon a number of factors. Ultimately, they will determine how much is going to be potentially given in grant and how much would be in loan. So, you know, there's still a number of moving pieces and components to that project. So that's why we've not come to you and said, we want, you know, 1.25 million for this, the water treatment plant, or we want 2 million or what have you, because as the mayor said, ours is 20% of that. We're not going to pay more, you know, than than what we need to pay. And we want to see the project move forward because it is critical to the city of Oxford and its future and its growth and development, its progress. It's very critical to us. So we have been persistent in pursuing and nudging and doing everything that we can possibly do to keep the partners who are not seeing the level of growth that we are moving forward with this project. And and that's why it's been a bit of a source of frustration for us, and it's been going on for five years, to really move this project to completion. And in that period of time, cost of escalating. So, you know, it keeps to be a bit of a moving target, and we keep zeroing in on funding sources to hit that moving target, and that's the dance that is going on.
I would just add that when Commissioner Bridges asked his question, the manager answered the question, but I don't see a recommendation from staff, and I don't see this board agreeing. I think you, you stated it very well, that, that you don't want to see us, like, plucking and pulling away at pieces. And I, I, one thing I never worry about with our manager is the tendency to spend without thinking of the impact. And I know that nothing is more important to him than funding the expansion of the water plant.
The fact of the matter is, when we first got that ARPA money, that funding, there was concern that we weren't spending it, that we weren't spending it on communities that sometime get neglected. I mean, you know, so there was a push initially that we spend that money since we got it. And so, you know, I mean, I think we just, you know, I don't think any board member thinks we should not be wise when we make decisions that I thought we will spend our money.
Okay, have we answered all the questions regarding the ARPA money and the, the recommendation? So I use the cori-, that we take the standard allowance for the entire amount that we have been appropriated. We have a motion. I just wanted to make sure that all questions have been asked. All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. Thank you very much. And we move to item D. Consider calling for a public hearing at the May 10th regular board meeting to hear citizen input on creating a social district for downtown Oxford. After extensive research, the DOE-DC recommends the creation of a social district for downtown Oxford. Many North Carolina towns and cities are either exploring or already have approved social districts. The advantages of social districts in downtowns include: Social districts offer a broad social and cultural experience for residents and visitors; create an opportunity for increased tourism as destination downtown; give an opportunity for increased dollars spent in stores and eateries as people stay longer to shop and dine and enjoy Oxford; and give an opportunity to encourage business growth with new businesses seeking to participate in this economic opportunity. And you have the support information in attachment 5D, which is the total of the slides that Commissioner Khan reviewed during the meeting that we had last week. And as such, staff recommends calling for a public hearing at the May 10th regular board meeting. What is the pleasure of the board? That might have been a unanimous motion.
I heard Toby.
You heard Toby? I heard Mayor Protem. You, you pick. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed most of the diagrams that indicated what a social district would be was, was like a square or a triangle, and it, and it was very precise. My question is, are there communities or municipalities that might have a section of town that represents the social district and then have pockets of other businesses or like satellites that spread from that particular location? Because I could see where a business that's not in that little square or a triangle might say, well, why can't we have that? And I'm just throwing that out, because I'm wondering, if we have a social district, does that preclude other businesses, other entities that might want to have a similar thing in their area?
And I'm going to defer to Commissioner Khan.
So to answer your question, yes, there are other municipalities, particularly other states, that have had this type of program for many years. And there are multiple districts. If you think of, like, I'll use Atlanta, for example, I don't think they have one, but just giving you an idea, right? You have different sections of Atlanta where you might have different, different social districts. What we looked at was the downtown central business district, because that's where the the majority of the licensees are, is a, is an area to, to do this. The other locations that have this are not typically in a walkable area. If you think of, like, you know, there's a restaurant out by, by Walmart or George's, for example. Not someone would be strolling down the street with a glass of wine and getting hit by a car. So, but yes, certainly as downtown grows over time, we anticipate, to Pierre's point earlier, that that district boundary can expand, because it'll just be marked by signage as well as other required implements such as trash cans and so forth. So this can expand and adjust as our business needs expand and adjust.
Okay. Excellent. Other questions? All in favor of calling for a public hearing, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. You hung on through a lot of discussion. Thank you. We appreciate your being here tonight. Okay, that's great. And with that, we go forward to item E, which is to consider contracting with Stewart, designed to provide services for the city's comprehensive land use plan update. The last comprehensive land use plan was adopted by the city of Oxford in 2009. It is now time and necessary to update our comprehensive land use plan to assist the city in making decisions on land usage and grant issues. Staff recommends contracting with Stewart Engineering Incorporated to achieve this goal. The requests for proposals were received from the following firms: Insight, Stewart, Quantum Consultants, and SNME Incorporated. And you have each of those proposals in attachment 5E. The recommended action is that a staff recommends contracting with Stewart Engineering Incorporated to provide services for the city's comprehensive land use plan update. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
That was a motion by Commissioner Bullock? And Commissioner Lumpkin's. Okay, any discussion on the motion? And Ms. Hart, is she here tonight? Yes, there you are. I had a question, which was that Stewart gives a great explanation of all the different portions that they will complete. And in Phase One, on the first page, where they say, "At a minimum, the following will be reviewed," and the current comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance and so forth, that bullet list. And I noticed that Insight, in addition to that, said that they would look at city building permit data, which includes single and multifamily homes, commercial and demolitions. They'll look at our bike plan, our PED plan, the downtown master plan, and the Bramble County Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And I wondered, I know there are lots of different sections where they say they're going to look at transportation and utilities. Is it reasonable to double-check with Stewart that they would be including these plans as part of their review? Okay, well, I would leave that up to the board, but it would seem that those plans are in existence and might-
Without considering with the building plans, single family, and all that, it's not going to be allowed back to it as a gift because we've not won.
Right.
So all of that is kind of, well, I don't know.
Kind of?
A waste.
Okay.
Because we've not won.
Right, but, sure. But what about our bike plan, PED plan, the Bramble County plan?
That's what the board wants to do, how we'd like to do.
Transportation plan. So that, that's up to the board. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. And so now we move forward to our add-on items. So add-on item one, let me find it. I'm sorry, I've got a lot of paper here. Okay. Consider adopting the revised 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. The Division of Water Infrastructure recommends that this document be updated yearly, but at a minimum every two years for it to be eligible for points in the grant slash loan application process. In addition, the project being applied for is required to be reflected in the Capital Improvement Plan, and the AMI meters were taken off when it was deemed that loans were not a good fit. We are applying for grant funding, and the project needs to be added back to the CIP. As reflected by the changes we have made in the past, this document serves as guidance for future projects. It does not commit the city to the project. Only an application for funds or the decision to use city funds commits the city to a project. Recommendation is that we adopt the revised 2022 Capital Improvement Plan. And I would point out that at the top of your page, the very first item under Water Distribution System, is the- distribution system is the advanced metering system, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for two million, two hundred thousand dollars. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item two is to consider adopting a resolution for the Rural Transformation Grant Fund for the downtown revitalization program. Uh, the city has an opportunity to pursue a formal application for a rural transformation grant, downtown revitalization, funding up to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to benefit revitalizing Oxford's downtown district and support our economic growth. This grant does not require a city match if it is received. The staff recommends that the board adopt the resolution to obtain funding. And you have the entire wording of the resolution, and I'll read the critical second paragraph, whereas the Board of Commissioners have developed a downtown master plan to support the proposed application for North Carolina Department of Commerce, Rural Economic Development Division, Rural Transformation Grant, downtown revitalization funding to help communities revitalize Main Street and downtown districts, seed and advance initiatives that build local capacity, revitalize and strengthen neighborhoods, foster small business recovery slash sustainability, and support economic growth, and so on and so forth. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by, that was Commissioner Khan?
Yes, ma'am.
All, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And the motion carries unanimously. And item three, you have the wording in front of you for the resolution that we adopted last March twenty-ninth in the open special session, uh, to support the renovation and expansion of the Car Lake Regional Water System Plant. If you go down to the next to the last paragraph on the first page, where it says, whereas due to the lapse of time and the increased cost of materials as impacted by the COVID-19 shutdowns, since preliminary estimates were obtained, currently acquired funding is no longer sufficient to meet all the expected costs. And although plans, and this is where I suggest changing the wording, to say, and although plans have been adjusted to allow for the project to begin, the shortfall has increased from approximately five million dollars to more than twenty million dollars, not including work that is needed, but has been deferred in order to cut costs. And then it goes to the next whereas, and everything else remains the same. I respectfully request that you approve the change in wording so that we can include this, uh, with the proposal for appropriation from Congressman Price's office, which is due this week. So what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion. We accept the changes suggested by our mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Thank you very much. And with that, we go to the consent agenda, which is to accept the February finance report from Finance Director, is that February or March should be more...
March.
The March finance report, and approve the March agenda and regular meeting minutes. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, that was Commissioner Bullock? Uh, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. And we have reminders here, April twenty-third, the Art and Wine Festival, which will be downtown on Main Street, starting at eleven a.m., and I believe requires tickets. And then April twenty-eighth, our first seasonal Alive After Five. Uh, and with that, Commissioner Lumpkins, is there anything that you would like to add?
Uh, no, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing.
Mayor Protem?
No.
Commissioner Bridges?
Oh, nothing.
Mr. Toby?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Gilreath, also, nothing. And Commissioner Khan?
Yes, ma'am. One very quick question for the city manager, uh, regards to meeting last week and the planting of the roundabout. I am doing my job and reminding you, as requested, uh, where are we standing with that presently?
Well, if you were at the, uh, which meeting was that in? They all have run together on the, um, it's just crazy right now. But, um, essentially, the staff is, uh, ready to go, uh, as far as landscaping the traffic circle. All we need is for the board to say go. Um, so it's, if we are still a consensus of, um, agreement to creating landscaping there that, uh, is essentially seasonal, being cool season, warm, cool season, warm season, um, we'll take it and run with it and promise you it'll be pretty.
Go.
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 That is basically all we really need. We will make it attractive. Um, you know, my staff can tell you that from day one, that has been my instruction to make it a centerpiece for the city of Oxford, and that is what we intend to do. Uh, but we, again, just did not want to place something in there with a permanence that is not going to be, you know, as visually attractive as it can be, and cause us some issues with, um, the flexibility of the area, uh, to create something seasonal or, or what have you. So doing this in this fashion will allow us to do that. Again, we've placed electricity there, there's water there. So, you know, there are a number of things that, uh, we can explore in the future with that area, and really making it a nice enhancement to downtown. But, um, if you give us the go-ahead, we'll make it look pretty.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion, or do we just need consensus?
I'll take a motion, I'll take consensus, I'll take whatever I can.
Offer a motion if that's what you need.
Off we'll go.
We've got a motion, go.
We've got a motion, any discussion?
You know, I would just say, make sure it's not distracting. You know, I mean, when we had the tree up, I'm serious, there were times I was going around that roundabout, and I couldn't see the cars coming in because it blocked it. And, and so we, if we're going to do landscaping, let's just keep it so that people can...
It will be low, the DMT will tell us to, you can't put something, you know, above basically a, a line of sight. So it will be relatively low to the ground and visually as stunning as we can make it.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Got a motion?
Uh, yes. All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye?
Aye.
I guess I should have said all in favor of go.
Go.
Okay. Oh, any opposed, like sign? Okay, we're good. It's unanimous. Thank you. And, and, uh, you know, I had something I was going to bring up, but to be quite honest with you, it's been a long evening, and I think I, it can wait. I'm going to go right down and say, Mr. Thornton, is there anything that you would like to add?
No, I'm of like mind that there's been a lot of discussion and a lot of action taken tonight, and I appreciate, you know, the board, um, taking the action that they have this evening and that they have in, uh, recent meetings to really progress the city of Oxford. I think that, um, you know, sometimes you've got to make decisions based upon what you believe are the right things for your community. And I've said for many, many years that, um, you know, having, having vision is, is just not a given thing. Having that vision, especially collectively having that vision, you know, to move forward and, and seeing things that you know are going to benefit your community ten, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, um, is a great thing. I've worked for communities where that wasn't necessarily the case, and, you know, you missed opportunities. And you look back years later and go, you know, well, we missed that chance to really take that step and do that, and it would really have been beneficial to the community. So I do want to say thank you to this board, you know, for allowing staff especially to come before you and, you know, have some innovative ideas that we believe are really going to make Oxford the pearl of central North Carolina. We really believe that, you know, Oxford's going to grow tremendously, you'll be the beneficiary of it. And I think your citizens ultimately, um, maybe not all of them, but the, the majority of them, I believe, will thank you, uh, for the steps that you are taking. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Burnett?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I would just add, thank you, got a lot of staff who are ready to go home. Thank you for all the hard work that you do. We appreciate you. For our citizens that come and hang out with us during our regular meeting, we appreciate you very much. So thank you, and all be safe and sound. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem, all in favor?
Aye.
Go with your feet. Thank you.
You've got me designed.
I agree with it. I enjoy having you.
Thank you.
You too. Making your motion.
Thank you.
What? Okay, this you don't need, but this you do. And you can, you know, obviously spell out the middle name. I know, I'm tired of being a holler. I'm trying to...